My call is being ignored. Let's stand to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone tonight to this especially called Board meeting. I think everyone here and actually in the viewing audience is well aware of the import of tonight's meeting and the reason that we've been discussing a variety of things and what we're all talking about. So, at the start of this meeting, I would just like to ask the audience that you refrain from any outbursts, any kind of things that might be considered a distraction from this process. I know, again, there's opinions and preferences that will be expressed. I'd ask that you do that in an adult manner and something that's fitting of this type of a process, and I know you will. So, at this point, the only thing we have on our discussion item tonight is to talk about the process that we've been working on in various manners for the last several months, the D.C. 348 State merger slash partnership. So, I'd just like to open it up, the floor to the board, for discussion, items that you want brought up. There are no motions on the table at this point, but now's the time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Would like to fill that void. Again, I want to express my appreciation to Dr. Woodburn and those who helped to have this document ready for us after last week's work session, Clark and Danny and Casey and Anthony and whoever else. This paper outlines a concept that encompasses many of the concerns we talked about last week. As Chairman Conant told me, it's far more than he anticipated. The opening statement is Dodge City Community College seeks an expanded partnership with Fort Hays State University for three basic goals: to collaborate in offering a four-year baccalaureate education; to assist in offering technical training for students and area businesses through a technical institute; to enhance the economy of Dodge City, Fort County, and Southwest Kansas. The first operational priority listed is the DCCC Board of Trustees is committed to offering four-year educational opportunities and expanded technical training for the students of Southwest Kansas. In this paper is a compilation of what we talked about last week. It includes baccalaureate, technology, athletics, finances, governance, taxing authority, and more. And so, Mr. Chairman, I move this board adopt the Dodge City Community College-Fort Hays University Operational Agreement dated November 5, 2014, and forward it to Fort Hays University and the Kansas Board of Regents as this board's proposal for a partnership between Dodge City Community College and Fort Hays State University.
If there's a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Let's talk about it. Appreciate your motion. We didn't have anything on the floor. I do think it's important to note the perceived differences that two readings by different individuals of this process may have come up with, and I certainly, again, I think the document that has been written by administration has a lot of items of interest in it. Certainly not the tenor or the tone that I anticipated coming from our previous meeting. However, that's just a personal assessment, and I'm sure there are different ones on this board, so. What other discussion is there?
Well, I thought it was interesting in our meeting last week, Mr. Chairman, that we do agree on the major points. We want four-year education. We want a technology center, and we want the things that we've talked about. The things that we do not agree on actually are not as numerous as the things we do agree on. And I was really pleased with our work session last week, and actually, I went over that DVD again, and I felt that we had made some real progress in getting to discuss those things together.
Yeah, well, there, I would agree with you on our points of agreement among this board, which is really, again, that's going to be the deciding factor here, our points of agreement, as kind of outlined in that meeting last week, I think are numerous. And again, it's always seems like it's that way that the things that separate you may be fewer than you really think if you talk about it. So, the question I would have, again, just as a point of discussion of this motion, is do we forward something to Kansas Board of Regents and Fort Hays that we think has a high chance of probability of moving the process forward? Or do we refine this further and say, we want to keep talking, we want to keep this process going? This particular document may be a starting point, but it's not the end.
I agree.
That's my question, and again, it's phrased in that manner to kind of bring up the point, do we really think that this is going to go anywhere if we decide to forward that further on? Because again, there's more than us involved here, obviously. There's two other parties that, it's a requirement that they're involved, or this process will not happen as well, so. Any other thoughts, any other board members, again, just talking out loud here?
To me, that, of course, technical center is, however it gets here, I don't care, but it's very, very important.
Well, I think there's one thing for sure. The governor wants to build a technical center someplace in state Kansas. I think that he wants it on a campus that is stable, and I think he quite frankly prefers to have it on a regent's center campus. So, I have bring into some doubt whether or not the governor would agree to put on this campus in the absence of a merger with a regent's university.
I'd respond to that, too. We had proposal from them with no input from us. This is for them now to consider. They can consider this. I would hope they would.
There's a lot of negotiating yet to be done. I think I'm ready for that, too.
Are you?
There's a lot of answers that have, a lot of questions that have no answers at this point, but that technical center is highly needed in Southwest Kansas.
We all agree.
Have you had any contact with either Regents or the governor's office regarding this?
No, but I talked with Pat George today, and they're having interesting meetings, as some of you know, in the first week in December in Overland Park and in Wichita.
Let's talk about the technical center.
Yes, to talk about this very kind of thing, which will be in more places than what, probably. They're just beginning, and I wish that we could have known some of what will come out of those discussions for our consideration, but we were well into it before we realized that was going to be a possibility.
Yeah, well, I, you know, in terms of the conversation we just had the other night about this could involve places other than Dodge City, I agree that the technical center could be that, but what's important is the proposal that we have before us involves $10 million from the state for a technical center on this campus. Wherever else it develops, I think that's great, but it's somewhat immaterial to our discussion, you know? I mean, if they can find places to forward that process elsewhere, then our opportunity is what we really need to focus on, I think, in terms of discussion. And I appreciate your comments on that, Don, that all of us who are sitting on this board, I think, understand a little bit about technical education. You know a lot about it, having taught it, and the direction that a lot of these things are going for across the nation, so that's a pretty exciting aspect of this thing.
I guess I'd like to ask a question for clarification. Do you feel that this does not promote technical center?
Oh, no, no, no. I don't. How was I misunderstood there?
Well, no, I just want to clarify.
No. I think, again, the proposal that we started working on is kind of the operative thing at this point still, if you will, this counterproposal. Again, my big question is, again, chances of success. I know some of that's unpredictable. Maybe, maybe everyone's willing to go that route, so I don't know. What are the thoughts of it?
Well, I really would hope this would get us to the place where we can talk back and forth.
We need a lot more negotiation, yeah.
Martin, President of Fort Hays State, has been very open to discussion or input or questions from our board individually, and I have talked with her recently about this process, and she is very interested in discussing and continuing to work on exploring, I guess, which is what the operative word has been in the steering committee meetings, is exploring this potential thing in front of us. So, I don't sense any holdback on Fort Hays' part of being interested in talking and negotiating as we're talking about. The big question is, and probably the thing that's most defining of it, is what form will that take? And as Morris alluded to, you know, the Regents concept and a merger, whatever you will, may be an explicitly required component of that, and if that's the case, we're kind of at an impasse or at loggerheads on some of this, no matter what motion we forward, so.
But, Mr. Chairman, we had every right to make our proposal and offer it. That's the way it works.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with that.
Well, to me, you know, the first meeting we had with Ed Hammond, this operational agreement is exactly what I thought it was going to look like from the beginning, so I'm great with it.
You mean the one that's on the floor?
Mm-hmm. The one that Ford Hays was talking about. Because then somewhere it got kind of construed where it had to be a merger, but that wasn't what we originally talked about. So, like I said, I think this is a great operational agreement.
I think. I spoke with Dr. Martin today, and, again, I reiterate with Dr. Conant saying that she's very, very open and very excited about the possibility of continuing to work with us on this. I mean, she's very excited about the concept, thinks it's very important for Western Kansas, and wants to continue, but the impression that I did get was that their current direction is negotiations around what had already been decided and established by the Regents and Fort Hays State, which is what was initially presented to us. And so, to come back with them with a polar opposite, because that's what it is, I mean, these are two separate, totally opposite ends of the spectrum white papers, basically, or operating agreement, whatever we want to call them, they're at the opposite ends. And yes, that's how negotiations work, that's how we need to come together in the middle. The impression that I got, my impression, not Dr. Martin's words, was that that's going to be more the equivalent of starting over. And so, voting tonight on that motion, Floris, seemed to be more almost a separate issue than voting on the issue that's already, you know, the process that we're already working for, working towards. I almost feel that, the impression that I got from them, and I feel the impression that I've gotten from the correspondences that we've received, we've all received from the Board of Regents, have been centered around the previous proposal, and that we almost may be discussing two separate issues. Either we can look at it as one and try to make that work, or we can start back at the beginning and rediscover it from the start. The problem is, is we got to figure out how to keep that door open. I think that's where we're at tonight, is trying to figure out how we can keep that door open.
I think you alluded to a key point talking with Dr. Martin, and you remember the last email we saw was that Andy from the Regents said the proposal would go to Dr. Martin. Right there is where we start with the negotiations that we haven't had.
And that's what I'm sharing, what I discussed with her six hours ago, so.
Was she speaking Chinese?
No, she's in English.
But she's just back.
So, I mean, like I said, why can't we use this as a starting point to start this process over and do it right this time, instead of how it was done last time?
We've learned a few things, maybe.
Learned a lot of things.
Right versus wrong. We don't need to argue that stuff tonight. That's immaterial, but certainly, the process, again, I think you learn a lot through this process, and Dr. Presley and I had talked about that at one point as well, so, again, we're basically at a point where it's not going to be Fort Hays that's going to decide whether this thing takes the next steps forward or not, it's going to be us that makes that decision, so. Be that as it may, that's the point we're at, and I believe that's where we're at. Again, I hear talk on this board tonight, and I believe that it's true that we all have some of the same goals in terms of what we want to accomplish. The means of getting there is at issue, but some of the end result, I think, could look very similar to what we started off with in this original, this original process for discussion, so. Again, it comes back to, do we, do we think that a proposal sent to them will have good chance of moving forward, or do we just say, let's shoot it out there and see what happens? I don't know. I don't know if there's a right answer to that, but we certainly have an opportunity one way or the other, so. I think the, keeping the door open, I think everyone's agreed that we need to do that. How do we best accomplish that? And can we tonight? I don't know. What other ideas or thoughts? Anybody have?
I think one of the big questions is, and I'm, hopefully by now, everyone's gotten a copy of the Dr. Woodburn's operating agreement that he's prepared for us and his associates, as to is this really negotiable? If this isn't negotiable, then we're not really, we're not really voting on this to support it, to negotiate, we're voting on this to say, this is our option. If you don't choose it, we're done. Because that's really the point. Is this negotiable or not? If it's negotiable, great. I think they're going to be open to that, because that was Dr. Martin's words, but if it's not negotiable, we need to make that clear.
On our part, as we understand.
Yeah, I mean, the intent, you know, we've talked about intent, so what's the intent of this? Is there intent for negotiation, or is there intent to say, this is it, and if this is it, this is it, and then let's call it what it is? I don't like talking in these gray areas, that's gotten all of us into lots of troubles, so we're, call it what it is.
I agree.
With me, the two institutions is not negotiable. If that's the one institution, no thanks.
All right. We're getting clarity, yes.
There's always room for negotiation. Anyway, it has been in my life span.
Yeah.
The wife and I don't always agree on everything, you know.
No, she's right.
Yeah, oh, yeah. No, I'm right.
You've been wrong once when you thought you were wrong.
Whatever. Anyway, there's, I think there's plenty of room for negotiation. I think it's necessary. There's too many irons in the fire to just throw out there and say, this is it.
So, again, the motion on the floor is basically this operational agreement. I would make it clear also, for the benefit of everyone, that this was provided by administration, but this has not been endorsed by or voted on by the Board of Trustees, but it's a document that was prepared, so I would make that distinction plain or clear, because I think that's an important thing.
Could I ask?
Yeah.
Will we have work sessions to go through it?
I think the only way to fine tune something like this is to, again, if it's accepted as a proposal, yes, to go through it piece by piece and step by step.
And if it isn't accepted?
If it isn't accepted, we're done.
It depends on what we answer it.
That's what I meant by accepted or not, you know, so. Again, I think it's kind of difficult to talk about these gray areas when we know you have a fork in the road and you choose one direction or another, and that's kind of where we've been at more than once, and we're still there, I think.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
What is it that we really don't like in this?
Well, again, the thing that concerns me, and I think Dr. Presley as well, is the appearance, however you want to claim it, that this does not appear to be negotiable just in the way it's written. Now, maybe that's just a misperception on my part, but I read it very clearly as that. So, again, if you're sending a document that you think, or that you imply this is the highway, take it or leave it, that's not a negotiating ploy, that's just a decision to stop. So, if we really want to do that and say this whole issue is something that we can't live with because of certain things, we really ought to make that clear, I believe. Now, again, you may look at this document and think, sure, it's negotiable, well, we can disagree on that. I don't, I don't see that appearance of that, so.
As far as the problem, Floris, you know, with the document, I don't think any of us do, because it all speaks to the points we brought up, which is that we all want higher educational opportunities for this community. I don't think anybody sitting at this table or hopefully standing in this room thinks otherwise. We wouldn't all be here if we didn't care about it. So, yeah, is it a great document? Yeah, it's great, and if someone would come in here and accept this, Fort Hays State, K State, Oklahoma State, I don't care, somebody comes in and wants to support it, great, but this in comparison to all of the previous documents, all of the months worth of work we've done up to this point, is very contradictory, and I'm not sure that it's going to be accepted. Do I personally like the document? Sure. Who doesn't have a problem with this? This gives us all of the great things we have now and allows all these other great things to come, so it's definitely not a problem. But I think what Dr. Conant's talking about, the points I'm trying to raise, is what is the intent with our vote and what is the intent with this document as we go back? If the intent is to try to work out and negotiate an option, great. If the intent is to say, this is our only option, it's going to be feasible for us, we just need to make that very clear to them, so that there is not gray areas when it comes to the Board of Regents vote on Friday or Fort Hays' continued discussions with us.
But from the beginning of this process, this is exactly what we said, they said was going to happen. We'd keep all the programs we had now and add to it, and that's exactly what that is, in my opinion.
I frankly don't see a problem with us proposing what we like when we were told from the beginning theirs was not negotiable.
Exactly.
Well, we didn't like that, and so that's what I'm saying, is I don't want to be, I don't want to put us in the same boat, okay? If we say the same thing, are we any better than they?
We've countered. We've countered.
But we can maybe take the higher road and be cordial about our counter, or speak our true intent. I'm not questioning what it says, and I'm not questioning, I'm just raising the point, we just need to be very clear in what we give back to them today. Because otherwise, we've been, felt like we've been left in the lurch and left in the gray areas and floundering for months now on this, and I think if we're clear and upfront with what our expectations are, the same will be, you know, same will be given back to us, and that's the best we can ask for. I mean, this has to be, has to be made clear. And that's all I'm asking, is what is, what is the intent of our, of the motion in regards to what are we going to give back to Fort Hays and the Board of Regents this week? You know, I would have hoped, it would have been nice, unfortunately, we're very time constricted, but to prepare this document and sit down with Dr. Martin, and sit down with the Board of Regents, and sit down and not have to be forced to have a vote on something tonight, but be able to go sit down and have the discussion with them face to face, talk through this process, and decide, okay, well, we better understand your stance on it, they better understand our stance on it, then we can come back together and make a more educated decision. Unfortunately, right now, I don't feel we're making a very educated decision, because we really don't know what the other side's stance is on. We've just not had the opportunity.
And you're saying we can't, we can't do that now?
We can, but because of the three days that we've got left before the Board of Regents meets in the morning.
That's one deadline. Just one.
I know, but that's what I'm, and that's the point I'm raising, is they expect a, it's Wednesday?
It's a week from Wednesday.
Oh, it is. A week from tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, their agenda is that way? Okay, well, a week from Wednesday regardless.
Regardless.
And if we can get something together by then, great, and let's do it. And that's what we need to do, and we can table, and I would recommend tabling the motion in until that discussion can be held.
Yeah, yeah. What do you mean, get something together? Right here it is.
No, our conversation is what I just brought up, the conversations with Dr. Martin, the conversations with the Board of Regents, to find out their stance on it and discuss this option with them, and to see, so that we better understand where they're coming from and what options really lay out there for us.
Don't forget the governor's office.
Sure.
Well, he will be in it later. She's first, Andy said. Mr. Chairman, I think it's time to call for the question.
There was a, did you make a motion to table it, or is that just a suggestion?
I was just trying to have a discussion.
You just had to hear that.
I'm not confusing anything.
Yeah. So, I guess in terms of, we can't really squelch discussion of this, but you can say, we're heading towards a vote, which we ought to be. And I would ask, you know, again, there's been enough confusion over the past few months on a few motions that we ought to, we ought to get an opinion from Mr. Curbs on what is the essence of this? Are we overlooking anything? What are we voting on? We've had those kind of questions before.
Maybe, I don't have a copy of the motion. Could you read it again, trustee?
Oh, well, would you like me just to hand it over to you?
That'd be great.
Okay.
All right. Here's the motion. I move this board adopt the Dodge City Community College-Fort Hays State University Operational Agreement dated November 5, 2014, and forward it to Fort Hays State University and the Kansas Board of Regents as this board's proposal for a partnership between Dodge City Community College and Fort Hays State University. I mean, I think that's pretty clear, that the board would be moved, would be voting to adopt this document as its proposal, and then to forward it on to Fort Hays State and the Kansas Board of Regents as this board's proposal for a partnership between Dodge City Community College and Fort Hays State.
So, does that imply to you, without negotiation, this is our proposal?
I guess I don't interpret it to be without negotiation. It's the board saying, this is our proposal to the Fort Hays State University and Kansas Board of Regents. I mean, they can always say, well, thank you for the proposal, let's talk about it, or not. I don't think it's a... It's the board saying, this is our proposal to the Fort Hays State University and Kansas Board of Regents. I mean, they can always say, well, thank you for the proposal, let's talk about it, or not. I don't think it's a... Well, the, look, we're, we're talking about negotiating the merger, the proposal of the Fort Hays State, the white paper, as it's affectionately known, or the May proposal.
Right.
So, I mean, that's, I think what, what it says is simply, this is, this is this board's proposal to Fort Hays State and the Board of Regents.
Okay.
And actually, that was my intention.
Okay. So, again, there's a motion and a second on the table. What other questions? Again, I think all minds need to be clear on what you're voting on here. We're voting for...
Are you asking?
No, I'm just taking it open for any further questions. Are there any?
Is that the intent of the boards? If they're going to vote on it?
Pardon?
Is that all of our intent? Is that our intent with that motion? I'm glad, thank you, Floris Jean, for making that clear. But is that all of our intent? Because I get a different impression, Dr. Joy, that your intent is that it is not negotiable, that that document's that document. Is that correct? I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, Jason. Please tell me what...
The two institutions?
Again, I'm asking for Kansas Board of Regents and Fort Hays State, because that would be my question if I was sitting in their seat. What was the intent of this?
If they want to discuss it, we can discuss it. To me, the two institutions is not negotiable, to me. But I'm not the only one on the board though, either. There's five other members.
And I think a point there is that we have never talked about that together. We've not talked about anything together, except for the Steering Committee, but they are not the ones that are legally responsible for this college.
True. No determinations ever were going to be voted on or made in the Steering Committee but brought to this board. That was made clear from the outset, and has been stated many times by me and others, and so, again, that's part of the process that we have been in for several months.
Just on the website?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Accessible anyways, so. So anyways, again, the motion and second is on the floor. Are there any other questions?
Mr. Curbs, what's the expected outcome upon the vote? So, vote for, a vote against, or failed vote? What is the, what is that going to mean?
A vote in favor of this motion would be for the board to adopt the paper dated November 5, forward it to Fort Hays State University as the board's proposal for a partnership with the, against, with Dot City Community College and Fort Hays State. So a vote of yes would be in favor of that motion.
And a vote against would be, that's what it is.
Opposed to...
And then what does that mean for the process? That's what I'm really asking, the clarification. What does that mean for the process?
And what is, what does a tied vote mean? That's the other...
Well, we know a tied vote, a tied vote means that the motion fails.
Okay.
And if the motion fails, are we done? Is this it? We move on? They move on? We go back to that regular old board meeting now?
I can't answer that for Fort Hays State, or, I've had no conversations with either.
From this board, though? I mean, what's it mean?
For this board, it would say that the motion to, to forward this on to them as this board's proposal failed.
Okay. And then they take it for whatever that's worth to them, I mean, essentially. Yeah, I think that point needs clarified as well. Any other questions? Any other thoughts? If we wrung this one out to the point where we're ready to vote?
Is there discussions, is there any other things that want to be brought up? Does it have to be voted on? Do we have to present this to them?
That's a good question. I don't, I don't think that we're required to present anything different, but, again, that's where we're at, at this point tonight.
But, I think, I saw an email at some point in time from someone, and I can't remember now who it was. It was someone with the Board of Regents who asked that this board, where does this board stand? And I think they wanted to know that by November 14th.
I think that was from Dr. Thompson.
Yeah, I can't remember who it was from, but I mean, I think that's, that's what has us all here this evening, is they want to know where this board stands. But, maybe, so, you've had more conversations than I, but that's what I understood.
I, I think that's true. I, I do think that that's the correct answer to that question, is that they require something from us or nothing. Essentially, that was the other option, so. All right. So moved and segmented. We're not going to reread that, but...
You want me to?
Just the first part of the yes.
Just the first part. The motion.
The motion.
Okay. I move this board adopt the Dot City Community College-Fort Hays State University Operational Agreement dated November 5, 2014, and forward it to Fort Hays State University and the Kansas Board of Regents as this board's proposal for a partnership between Dot City Community College and Fort Hays State University.
All right, thanks. All right. It's been moved and segmented. All in favor of this motion, raise your hand.
I think so, good.
Motion is three to three?
Motion fails.
Motion fails. All right. You know, I think as far as the future of, we will see what, what happens with this process now. I do think one thing that the board can agree on, even though we've, again, kind of come to an impasse on part of this, is our desire for this community, the students of this community, and the surrounding areas to have better opportunities than we can currently offer.
That's not a question.
So, to me, that, regardless of what happens now, could lay the groundwork for some positive things to happen in the future. At least we would hope that. I think that would be all of our hope on this board, so. Are there any other motions? We're not constrained to one. Is there any other business? Next meeting, regular scheduled meeting, is November 17. I will not be present, unfortunately, except in spirit, but you guys will handle it. This meeting is adjourned.